And this is Gavel to Gavel, WCBW TV's complete coverage of the Richmond City Council. Good evening once again, I'm Dick Harmon. Welcome to our first meeting of the month of March. Now, if you have taken the agenda off the Internet, boy, there've been some changes. We'll try and go over those for you right now. As you can see, once again, we are still working to get those gremlins out of all the equipment here, so we're gonna do this with one camera tonight, once again, but we will get to the meeting and we'll get to all the information that needs to be taken care of. Okay, so here's the way it's gonna go now, we're gonna look at the revised agenda, of which we have fifteen items on consent and five on regular, but boy, that's gonna change, too. Okay, item number one, Ordinance 2014-93, that's to establish an advisory task force for the economic revitalization of South Richmond, that's been continued until April 27th. Item two, Ordinance 2014-131, this concerns the Deferred Retirement Option Program for the purpose of extending the participation period in the Deferred Retirement Option Program, that's been continued for thirty days until April 13th. Item three, Ordinance 2014-221, special use 1600 Monument Avenue for the purpose of authorizing outdoor dining for an existing restaurant, that's been continued till April 13th. Now, item fourteen, Ordinance 2015-25, this concerns a partial exemption of rehabilitated structures from real estate taxation, that will stay on the consent agenda tonight. Item five, Ordinance 2015-30, and this is for the purpose of better enabling the city and other jurisdictions who are members of the authority to use the Princeton Creek Regional Jail by identifying restrictions that can be, on inmates that can be sent to the jail, that stays on the consent agenda for tonight. Okay, we get on now to item number six, and this is Ordinance 2015-35, this concerns the duties of the Department of Informational Technology, this has been continued for two weeks until the 23rd of March, which is our next meeting. Item seven, Ordinance 2015-36, authorizing the CIO to accept nineteen hundred dollars from the Office of the Attorney General to transfer a hundred and ninety dollars in matching funds, and this is for the purpose of providing a grant to the Department of Police to administer the Triad Crime Prevention and Precautions Program, and that's been continued till April 13th. Item eight, Ordinance 2015-37, authorizing the CIO to accept three hundred twenty thousand from the Virginia Department of Taxation and transfer eighty thousand in matching funds, and this is for the purpose of constructing a bicycle pedestrian trail beneath the I-64 Overpass from Valley Road to Hospital Street that continues along Hospital Street until ending at Oliver Hill Way, that stays on consent. Item number nine, Ordinance 2015-38, to declare a surplus and direct the sale of real estate at thirteen oh nine North 23rd, eighteen oh two Montpelier, two oh six West Home Street, thirty twenty Garland Street, thirty six hundred Delaware Avenue, and thirty twenty three Melrose Avenue, for nominal consideration to the South Side Community Development and Housing Corporation for the purpose of enabling the redevelopment of the properties, that stays on consent. Item ten is Resolution 2013-R254, supports the city's efforts to settle certain claims asserted by certain owners of real properties abiding Princeton Creek in the city, and that's been continued for two weeks till the 23rd of March. Item number eleven, Resolution 2014-R149, this to impose enhanced speeding penalties on Chapel Drive between Maguire Drive and Hopkins Road, that has been continued for two weeks, and along with that, so is item number twelve, Resolution 2014-R140, same thing, imposing enhanced speeding penalties on Maguire Drive between Broad Rock Road and Hopkins Road, that also continued till the 23rd. Item thirteen, Resolution 2015-R10, this is to regulate textile recycling collection bins, this stays on consent agenda. Item fourteen, Resolution 2015-R11, requesting the CIO to negotiate an agreement with the Greater Richmond Transit Company, this is the leased property, basically everybody knows it as the Bus Barn, it's at the intersection of Robinson Street and West Carey Street, this would be to be on public parking and community event purposes, so that is gonna be continued until the 23rd. Then item fifteen, Resolution 2015-R15, approves twenty-five hundred twenty-three dollars and five cents for the printing and mailing of postcards to fourth district residents, that stays on consent. Now, regular agenda. Item sixteen, Ordinance 2014-194, this is to authorize special use of the property at twenty-two sixteen Keswick Avenue, and this is for the purpose of a single-family detached dwelling and a takeout restaurant, and this one is staying on the regular agenda, however, the Planning Commission has recommended denial of the request, but that will stay on consent, so we'll hear more about that a little bit later on. Ordinance number seventeen is Ordinance 2014-199, this is the one concerning cruelty of the animals or prohibit the use of certain instruments for training and control of elephants, this is being continued till the 23rd meeting, and there is going to be, of course, the circus is in town next week, and there's gonna be some meetings between the circus people and the City Council, however, the Bonham and Bailey Circus has said they will be doing away with elephant acts in 2018, so this may be just something to say until they do away with that, you can't use these items, but we'll be hearing more about that at the next meeting. Then we got to item eighteen, Resolution 2014-184, requesting the CIO cause to be issued a request for proposals for the purpose of selecting a development company for the Boulevard site, and once again, I tell you, that is not saying that, okay, we're gonna tear it on the dime, and we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, no, they're just asking for, requesting for proposals to select a development company, but nothing is going to be done right away, and this is not precluding anything happening to any item, any buildings that are there right now, this is all gonna be looked at later, but anyhow, that paper has been continued for two weeks. Item nineteen, Resolution 2014-258, this is reversing the decision of the Commission of Architectural Review that denied a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed painting of the exterior brick portions of condominium at four oh seven North Allen Street Avenue, that's been continued for two weeks. And then we come down to the final item on the regular agenda, Resolution 2015-R14, this was requesting the mayor identify sufficient funding for a city economist position, that paper has been withdrawn. So, we started out with fifteen items on consent, nine are continued, so that leaves us with six items on consent. Regular agenda, we had five items, three were continued, one withdrawn, we're down to just one item, and that one is going to be that item concerning Keswick Avenue, now that building is at the corner of Keswick and Harwood Streets in South Richmond, but that paper is the only paper on the regular agenda for tonight. And we have just three people signed up to speak during citizens' comment period, one to speak on dangerous trees, one to talk about Section Three of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968, and one concerning someone who was struck by a motor vehicle at the corner of Tenth and East Marshall Street. And, so it looks like it could be a light agenda, but you just never know, we won't know until we get started, we'll be getting started in just a few minutes, I'm Dick Harmon, stay tuned.
Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting will now come to order, at this time, the invocation will be given by Reverend Dr. John T. Schweitzer of First English Lutheran Church.
Let us pray. Most gracious God, we thank you for this day which you have made, let us rejoice and be glad in it. Thank you for this body of people that serve on the Richmond City Council, guide them as they go about doing the business set before them, that everything which is decided here this evening find favor in your sight, bind all of us in Richmond together in a spirit of love, and help us always to maintain a peaceful disposition towards one another. We remember the unemployed, the working poor, the homeless, the lonely, the infirm, the addicted, victims of racism and violence, grant that the discussions and decisions here tonight might serve to alleviate their sufferings, and bring about a city where everyone, young and old alike, feel safe and are able to enjoy those good things, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness envisioned by our nation's founders. Help us above all else, always to keep before us the greater good of the city of Richmond, to reach for the stars, but at the same time, remain aware of the realities before us and have our obligations to this community. We ask all this in your sovereign name, amen.
Thank you, if there are any seated, if you would stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, please provide the chamber emergency evacuation announcement followed by the citizen comments guidelines.
Upon activation of the emergency alarm signal, all persons should immediately exit the building. Please use the exits to the left or right front of the council chamber or the east or west stairwells outside the rear doors of the chamber. Do not use elevators or escalators. After exiting the building, proceed to the assembly area located in the parking lot bordered by Clay, Eighth, and Ninth Streets. Citizens and employees should assist visually and hearing impaired visitors with exiting the building. Citizens wishing to speak during public hearings and/or the citizen comment period have generally three minutes to speak. Persons appearing before council are not allowed to: campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person, including comments directed at public officials or staff members that are not related to their official duties, or address or question staff members directly. All questions are to be directed to the President of Council. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in speakers forfeiting any remaining time and further disciplinary action as necessary, which could include barring from attendance at future meetings of the City Council for a period of six months.
Madam President, for the record, all members of council on attendance tonight. Great, Madam Clerk, let's move on to appointments and reappointments. Yes, council members, each of you have been provided a listing of appointments and reappointment recommendations from your standing committee, is there a motion to accept the recommendations as presented?
So moved.
Seconded. Council is voting on the motion to accept the appointments and reappointments as presented, Mr. Bellows?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Agostino?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Those appointments have been approved. Thank you, Madam Clerk, if we could move on to awards and presentations? Yes. Tonight's first recognition being presented by Seventh District Council Representative Cynthia Newbill recognizes the 2015 Salvation Army Boys and Girls Club Local Club Youth of the Year candidates and winner. The annual Youth of the Year competition recognizes Salvation Army Boys and Girls Club members ages fourteen to eighteen for their service to the club, community, and family, academic success, strong moral character, life goals, poise, and public speaking ability. Dedicated to serving children and youth, the Salvation Army Boys and Girls Club located in the Churchill neighborhood of the Richmond East End Seventh Voter District is a partnership between the National Salvation Army and the Boys and Girls Club of America nonprofit organization. A thriving success, the Salvation Army Boys and Girls Club currently has more than five hundred members and includes a daily average attendance of more than one hundred fifty. The winner of the local level 2015 Salvation Army Boys and Girls Club Local Club Youth of the Year competition moves on to the statewide Virginia Youth of the Year competition that will be held in Richmond April the fifteenth through seventeenth, 2015, in which local level club winners will compete against youth from all around the Commonwealth of Virginia. Richmond City Council hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate the candidates and winner of the 2015 Salvation Army Boys and Girls Club Local Youth of the Year competition, wishes them many years of continued success, and brings us to the attention of all Richmond residents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I would like to ask the local club candidates, as well as the winner, if you would come forth, please. I had the opportunity to be a part of a panel to judge these four extraordinary youth, all of whom were candidates for the local club Youth of the Year for the Salvation Army Boys and Girls Club, and I want to say they made it extraordinarily difficult. They are all winners, these young people have some of the most stellar, it's good, we'll turn around again, some of the most stellar commitments and goal, career goals, their commitment to the club, their commitment to their communities and to family, their commitment to their academics, and they talked about, each of them had an opportunity to talk about their work, their, well, work, volunteer work at the club, their work and their efforts in the community, but also about their career aspirations and their contributions and how they've made a difference, and they were simply extraordinary, and so, as a result of having the opportunity to be a part of the club, to join them, I thought, and I knew I would be remiss if I did not introduce to you these four extraordinary youth, all of whom were candidates, Ms. Arsenault, who's actually going to represent us in April at the national level, but to say that each of you, each of you, in your own right, are extraordinary youth, we look forward to all that is ahead of you in terms of your future endeavors, and really just thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be a part of that event and to know that you're there and you're coming behind us, and so the first person, the local club Youth of the Year winner is actually Ms. Dove Arsenault. The other candidates, Ms. Darvinette Johnson, Mr. Terrence Gray,
Thank you.
And Mr. Gerald Williams. Again, congratulations, extraordinary commitment to community, to family, to academics, to country, some of you will go on to serve in the armed services and, I think, physical therapy? Okay, so I try to remember all of those career aspirations from you as well, but just to say, you're winners in your own right, I look forward to you bringing home the gold when you go to the national, but all of you are extraordinary leaders and extraordinary youth, and looking forward to you coming back home, and we're keeping the seats warm for you, just want to let you know that, right? So, with that, any comment from anyone?
Amen.
Okay, then I'll ask Mr. Jones, in the leadership Salvation Army Boys and Girls Club in the East End, any comment you'd like to make?
I'd just like to thank you, as well as the council, for recognizing our young people, we thank God for them, they are extraordinary, as you already have mentioned, and we thank you that you've just given them encouragement. And we thank you that you've just given them encouragement as far as moving on to the next level. Dove is amazing. We're looking forward to great things for her. And these three are actually remaining, they actually have another opportunity next year. So, thank you for the opportunity to be in here. Appreciate it.
And I want to recognize one of the other major support persons. I'm going to come forward. Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations, each of you.
The next recognition being presented by 4th District Council Representative Kathy Graziano recognizes Thompson Middle School's Boys Basketball Team for their successful 2014-2015 season. The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council hereby unite to recognize, honor, and celebrate Richmond Public Schools Thompson's Middle School Boys Basketball Team for their successful 2014-2015 Richmond Public School Boys Middle School Basketball Season. As testament to their outstanding dedication, the Richmond Public Schools Thompson's Middle School Basketball Boy, Boys Basketball Team won the 2014-2015 Richmond Public Schools Boys Middle School Basketball Season Championship this year, which after also having won the championship last year marks the second straight year in a row for the team to have earned this important title. The result of support, hard work, skill, and determination, the success of the Richmond Public Schools Thompson Middle School Boys Basketball Team goes to the outstanding principals, administrators, teachers, coaches, managers, members, staff, parents, families, supporters, friends, and community for their collective role in helping to make this achievement possible. And the individuals present to receive the award are Ms. Joy Lowery, school principal, Andy Julian, head coach, Lemmy Okonta, assistant coach, Douglas Scroggins, assistant coach, Jerry Gunter, assistant coach, Shaquon Hawkins, team member, and additional team members, Deshaun Harris, Najil Riley, Isaiah Harris, Devonte Harris, Tevel Gary, Dwayne Watkins, Talique Tyler, Tyshaun Stiff, Carrie Stiff, Thomas Sexus, Cillian Himmel, I'm sorry if I'm chopping up names, Ikichi Shintulu, Jaheem Stokes, Ty Lacy, Talique Bryant, Malik Richardson, Marcus Leisure. Those are the individuals.
And I want to say that I felt it was important that everybody's name got mentioned because you guys have done a great job this year. You know that whether you win or lose a game, playing sports builds confidence, teamwork, sportsmanship, and it teaches many life lessons. It's not all about winning unless you go to Thompson. If you go to Thompson, it's all about winning. Isn't it? And these guys have won not just the championship this year, but they won the championship last year. And so, we are really, really proud of you. And I was looking through the list, a lot of you are going to move on to high school. We got some in 7th and 6th that are going to be coming back next year. So, we'll be looking for you to be here next year, getting an award again. And I want to say that if you want to play for, oh, I, this, I wrote, oh, if you want to play for this coach, you have to have a C in all your subjects. So, not only do you have to be good at this, you've got to be pretty good at this, too. So, I want to congratulate you and your coach for, you for making your grades, and him for inquiring that you make those grades. That is really awesome. I appreciate all of you coming down. I appreciate the hard work of your coach and your assistant coaches. And I look forward to seeing you next year, the ones that are still at Thompson. And maybe we'll have some of you who move on to our high schools down here get a championship from high school. So, thank you very much for coming. And again, congratulations.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to give my fellas a round of applause for a great, great, great season. They have no idea how hard they worked in all the obstacles we went through, whether it was other teams, academic issues, making sure everybody stays on path. And I just want to thank our assistants, Coach O, Coach Scroggins, and Ms. Larry for all the support that she gave the basketball team. Thank you. I'll get them out.
Just so you guys know, everybody's getting an official City Council award, okay? And I hope it's not your last one. I hope we're giving them to you next year.
We got showcases to fill out.
Thank you very much.
The next recognition being presented by Council Vice President and 3rd District Council Representative Chris Hilbert and 6th District Council Representative Ellen Robertson recognizes Ms. Marty M. Williamson for her ongoing dedication and community service. A dedicated community servant, Ms. Marty M. Williamson envisioned and established the Marty Bra Project in order to solicit, collect, and provide donations of new women's undergarments and feminine hygiene products on behalf of women who are homeless, are on low or restricted incomes. Living in the southern Barton Heights neighborhood, Ms. Williamson collected these donations in February 2015 to help support local nonprofit organizations, churches, and entities serving women that are homeless, are on low, or restricted incomes. Richmond City Council hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate Ms. Marty M. Williamson, coordinator of the Marty Bra Project, thank her for her ongoing dedication to our community, and brings her work to the attention of all Richmond residents.
Well, it appears that Ms. Williams is unable to join us this evening, and that's too bad, but we are going to accept this on her behalf. You know, taking care of personal hygiene is something that's not mentioned in polite company, but it's certainly something that everyone has to do. And the fact that Ms. Williams would take her time to think of this idea, to put it out on social media, and to collect so many items that she had to rent a pod says a lot about who she is as an individual. And I know that we all want shelter, and we think about the homeless and trying to get something to eat, putting a roof over someone's head, but I want to especially thank Ms. Williams for heading up this project and putting it, putting a little spin on it there, Marty Bra's, I guess it being at the time of Marty Gra. And I just really want to thank her, and I'm sorry that she isn't here, but council will accept this on her behalf, and we will make sure that she gets it in a private ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Good evening, Richmond. I'd just like to echo Mr. Hilbert's comments. Since Ms. Williams and her husband have been living in the Barton Heights community, they have reached out in a lot of different ways to provide some extraordinary community services for young people, senior citizens, as well as been very active in civic leadership in the communities, both in the 3rd and the 6th District. And they are really extraordinary people, and they see this as a ministry. And there is no lack of imagination in the ways that they go about providing some exceptionally meaningful and valuable services. So, I'm sorry that she's not here, but as Mr. Hilbert said, we'll make sure that she receives this. Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes the awards and presentations for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you would call the list of citizen comment speakers, please.
The first speaker is Marie Morton Hart.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Marie Hart, Morton Hart. That's my maiden name. Yes, ma'am. And I reside in the 8th District. I want to say a few words first, before I talk about those trees in my yard, about my friend Donald Hatchet. Donald and I grew up in Southside. He was our paper boy when we were children. I reside on East 15th Street in the 200 block, and he was on Decatur Street in the 1900 block. He can't say the jackleg preacher no more. I used to come out church on Sunday, and Donald would be out there picking First Baptist church with his, with his sign. So, I saw Donald before he passed back in December, and we talked. I had no idea that he was as sick as he was, but I just want to say, I miss my friend, Donald. I learned a lot from him. Thank you. About the trees in my yard, they came out, and if there's a tree that can trip, it's in my yard. They came out on Thursday, January 22nd at 7:45. Grab big old truck pull up next to my neighbor's house, and they stayed there making all that noise. And I guess she was wondering what was going on. Then a pickup truck came from the city and parked on the corner. I was sitting at the, at the desk, and he was parked facing the wrong side on the street. They didn't do anything. And then here come another great big old yeller truck, and the man got up on the thing. And if I hadn't have been home, I would not have known that they were even had been out there. A woodpecker could have did what they did with those trees. Those trees are still tall. I guess they want them to fall in the street before they come and take them out. So, will y'all, I know you say, somebody gonna come out there. They not doing anything but those trees.
Ms. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Morton Hart?
Huh?
I'm coming out there myself.
Well, I wish you would, so you can see it and see how dangerous it is. I fell last week in the snow, and my doctor gonna send a report to you, Mr. Jackson. Thank you.
Marie, Madam President, thank you. I know that I've been out there over and over and over, and I know that she has been down here, and I think it is a shame.
This is about the seventh or eighth time I've been up down here about those trees.
And especially when she was told that they would take care of it, and like she said, you go over there and look at it, it's like a little branch has been trimmed, and that's it. It's like they did their job. How did they do their job? It hasn't solved the problem. And like she said, she's fallen again. I tripped last year over there, going to her door to give her some papers, because it's up in the yard. And there's no way that I, I don't know what, I mean, I know they say if you trim the trees, it's going to kill the trees. Well, what's more important, her or the tree? And that's what I said last time. And I know that trees are important, yes, they are, but so is her life. When she lives in that home, she's a taxpayer. The tree does not pay taxes. She does. And she's the homeowner, and it's on her property.
The roots is what I fell on.
Yes.
The roots is, is tall, this tall, right up near the curb. We don't have sidewalks over there.
No.
So, I'll be looking for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Call me first.
232-6108.
I'm going to get your number. I'm going to get everything from Ms. Trammell.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Thank you, Marie. And I'm sorry you had to come back down here again. The next speaker is Willie Earl Bradley. Willie Earl Bradley, and I don't believe he's present, Madam President. I don't see him. And that concludes our list of speakers for this evening.
Okay, I would just like to take a moment. Ms. Morton Hart brought up Mr. Hatcher, and he is one of the citizens that have come down here and has truly, truly kept us on our toes. I got to know him very well in my little tenure of being on council. And so, I would like, at this time, for us to take a moment of silence for him and also my liaison, John Westbrook, that has passed away as well, and his funeral was today. If we can just take a moment for those two people, a moment of silence, I'd greatly appreciate.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, let's move on to review the amendments to tonight's agenda.
Amendments to tonight's agenda are as follows. Item 1, ordinance number 2014-93, will be continued to the Monday, April 27 council meeting. Item 2, ordinance number 2014-131, will be continued to the Monday, April 13 council meeting. Item 3, ordinance number 2014-221, will be continued to the Monday, April 13 council meeting. Item 6, ordinance number 2015-35, will be continued to the Monday, March 23 council meeting. Item 7, ordinance number 2015-36, will be continued to the Monday, April 13 council meeting. Item 10, resolution number 2013-R254, will be continued to the Monday, March 23 council meeting. Item 11, resolution number 2014-R149, and item 12, resolution number 2014-R150, will both be continued to the Monday, March 23 council meeting. Item 14, resolution number 2015-R11, will also be continued to the Monday, March 23 council meeting. Item 16, ordinance number 2014-194, has been moved to the regular agenda. Item 17, ordinance number 2014-199, will be continued to the Monday, March 23 council meeting. Item 18, resolution number 2014-R184, has been moved to the regular agenda but will be continued to the Monday, March 23 council meeting. Item 19, resolution number 2014-R258, will also be continued to the Monday, March 23 council meeting. Madam President, those are all of tonight's agenda amendments.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any additional amendments to tonight's agenda? Madam Clerk, please call the question.
I will need a motion to accept the amended agenda as presented. Councilwoman Newbill, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Robertson, will you second that motion?
Second, Madam Clerk.
Council is voting on this evening's agenda amendments as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agulhasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby? The amended agenda is before you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please provide a review of items on tonight's consent agenda.
Madam President, the consent agenda items for tonight are as follows. Item 4, ordinance number 2015-25, to amend City Code Section 98-157 to revise the city's rehabilitation tax credit program by removing the requirement that an applicant submit a letter issued by the Virginia Department of Historic Resources confirming compliance and confirmation of compliance from the Department of Planning and Development Review. Item 5, ordinance number 2015-30, to provide for the amendment of Section 3.1 of the service agreement by the Poynter Creek Regional Jail Authority to better enable the city and other jurisdictions of the authority to use the jail by modifying the restrictions on amendments that can be sent to the jail. Item 8, ordinance number 2015-37, to accept $320,000 from VDOT to transfer $80,000 in matching funds and to appropriate the total to the New Cannon Creek Trail Connector Phase 4 project for constructing a bicycle pedestrian trail beneath the I-64 overpass from Valley Road to Hospital Street. Item 9, ordinance number 2015-38, to declare surplus and to direct the sale of 1309 North 23rd Street, 1802 Montero Avenue, 206 West Home Street, 320 Garland Street, 3600 Delaware Avenue, and 323 Montrose Avenue for consideration to the Southside Community Development and Housing Corporation to enable the redevelopment of the properties. Item 13, resolution number 2015-R10, to declare public necessity to amend the zoning ordinance and to initiate an amendment to the city's zoning ordinance to make such changes as may be necessary to regulate textile recycling collection bins, and request that the CAO calls to be conducted a study to determine how the city's zoning ordinance should be amended to lawfully regulate such bins. Item 15, resolution number 2015-R15, to approve $2,523.05 from the council district funds for the 4th District to pay the Department of Information Technology for printing and mailing postcards to 4th District residents. Those are all of the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now have a public hearing on the consent agenda.
We will now have a public hearing on the consent agenda. Are there any persons in the audience who wish to speak in opposition of any items on the consent agenda?
Good evening. My name is Silver Person Herman, citizen of Richmond, Virginia. I'll tell you straight off the bat that I don't know much about this resolution that I'm speaking to. I just heard it read for the first time, as you were reading just now. But I'm gonna raise opposition to item number 13, patroned by Mr. Samuels, to declare public necessity to amend zoning ordinance and to initiate an amendment to the city's zoning ordinance to make such changes as may be necessary to regulate textile recycling collection bins. Those are those big metal boxes you see in parking lots at convenience stores. I don't know what the problem is, but I know that what people do on private property is their business. These people are collecting clothing and shoes for people less fortunate than ourselves, and unless there's any legitimate grievance with these containers being posted on public property, I don't think such legislation is required. Thank you.
Is there anyone to speak in favor of any other papers on the consent agenda? Bring it back to council. Mr. Samuels?
In case anybody else wants to speak first, please let them. I'm gonna pull up something so I can hopefully put Mr. Persinger's fears at rest.
Okay. Any other speakers on any other papers?
I'll maybe stall for Mr. Samuels a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Angelasto.
It's my understanding from reading the actual language that it's a request to study our zoning laws as it pertains to these bins and whether or not anything should be changed from a couple of, we don't have the bins as much as other places do in the 5th District, but we do have some thrift stores that have a loading area that you can make donations to. And one of the problems that we have often is that people will just come and dump items that they think the thrift store will take, but they are coming at hours when the thrift store is not open. So it becomes just this massing of things that, and sometimes they just become left on a Saturday, and they sit out, and they begin to make a little bit of a mess for the few days that they're out there. I believe what this is looking at is whether or not these bins are overflowing, if they're being collected, who's managing it, and trying to make sure that there's more of a structure in place.
Mr. Samuels?
Thank you. A few months ago, a gentleman from the Secondary Materials and Recycled Textiles Association came and met with me along with some other representatives, some local charities that are the recipient of Smart donations regarding these textile recycling centers, or recycling bins. And what they found was wherever they put one, it's clearly marked, clearly delineated, you know exactly who had placed it there, had the permission of the owner, and there was a phone number where you could reach to call if there were any problems. There was also information on the side so that you could look up how to help folks who are in need. Some scrupulous folks, however, go up and down the 95 corridor, and because of Richmond's proximity to it, were actually taking recycling bins for textiles like this and putting them next to the ones where folks had permission to place. They were not being cared for, and it is becoming increasingly clear that they are not all for charitable contributions, but instead just to make money through the textile recycling system. This was a grave concern. We've heard from some property owners and some business owners who allow the textile recycling bins on their property, that the valid ones are great, but there was a lot of sketchy folks out there throwing bins out as well with the hopes of taking some away from this charity. Because of that, we thought it might be appropriate to review what rules we had in place regarding the placement of the textile recycling bins. This is the first step in asking the administration to make recommendations on how to properly enforce the rules so that we are not forbidding anybody from placing these out, but we are ensuring that they are maintained and that they are looked over well by both the property owner and the owners of the recycling bins themselves. Hope that answers some of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Madam Clerk, if you will please call the question.
Council is voting on tonight's consent agenda items as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Angelasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Those papers have been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, let's move on to the regular agenda.
We have one item on the regular agenda tonight, which is item number 16, ordinance number 2014-194, to authorize a special use of 2216 Keswick Avenue for a single-family detached dwelling unit and a takeout restaurant. The paper is before you.
Is there anyone here from the administration that would like to speak on this paper?
Good evening. I'm Lori Markham with the Department of Planning and Development Review and Secretary to the City's Planning Commission. This is a special use permit that would authorize a commercial use in an R5 district. There was a public hearing at the Planning Commission last week, and they voted to recommend denial of the proposal, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about it.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this paper?
As you form a line to speak, if you would please state your name.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Louise McQueen, and I've been a resident of the Balmie community for 45 years. I do not support the establishment of a fast food carryout facility because there are several businesses that already provide fast food in our neighborhoods. And secondly, I want to point out that we need foods that are healthy, not only for our adults, but also for our children. And I notice that persons in depressed areas such as Oak Grove and Balmie don't have many supermarkets at all where they can purchase healthy, affordable foods. Instead, there are more fast food establishments. The lack of healthy foods increase our risk of contracting, heart disease, diabetes, cancer, high blood pressure, and a lot of us are obese. Our neighborhoods are used as prey by persons hoping to make a fast or a quick buck. There is very little concern for the welfare of our residents. I respectfully urge you to deny this request for a special use permit to establish a takeout restaurant in the Oak Grove-Balmie communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McQueen.
Good evening. My name is Rosa Jones, and I'm the president of the Oak Grove Civic Association. And I'm a little hoarse tonight, but I want you to understand what I'm saying. We do not want another takeout restaurant. No fish, no chicken, takeout food. We have enough in our community. It's just congested enough, and it's no way that I could express it any other way. We do not agree for it to be in our community. You wouldn't want it in your community. I don't know why Mel Jones would, a patron for this paper, to bring it to our community. He wouldn't want it in his community. And I've been in that area for 50 years. I've been the president for 13 and the vice president for about six or seven over there in the Oak Grove area. And I've been through thick and thin. We've had burglars, we've had crimes and everything, and I've been trying to help clean it up with the community, police, the council person, and so forth that's been in our district. No way do we want another chicken or fish carryout restaurant. We got restaurants all around us as food. Anything else can be opened, shoe shop, dress shop, whatever, we could use something like that, but no more food, no more carryout restaurant. So I'm asking, please, we do not need it, and we do not want it, and we do oppose it. The community, the neighborhood, the civic association, and everybody living right around shops, food shops. We got a grocery store, we have a food mart, and really, we have a supermarket, and that's a convenience store itself, hot and cold food with a deli.
You have 30 seconds.
So thank you so.
Please begin to summarize.
So much for listening, and please, we do not need it.
Good evening, council members. My name is Barbara Starkey-Good, and I am speaking in opposition of the fast food takeout special permit given to the property at 2216 Keswick Avenue. I think Ms. McQueen and Ms. Jones has about said it all, as far as we do not need another fast food takeout in our neighborhood. It only adds to more trash that we have to clean up, which we are doing all the time. And I think it was mentioned that if anything is needed in our neighborhood is a quality grocery store. Now, that is what is really needed in the Balmie-Oak Grove neighborhood. Fast food, we do not need. And I'm gonna sum it by saying that I know that we have lots of fast food restaurants in our neighborhood already. And if this, I'm hoping that this special permit is not issued and this restaurant is not opened in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leon Jones. I live in the 9th District. I'm a member of the Star Fellowship Baptist Church. I'm a deacon there. We are in total opposition of the building opening across from us. I have some pictures to demonstrate exactly what we are talking about. As you can see, we are right next to this building. We are right next to this building. This is where our church is, and this is a Sunday morning. As you can see, the traffic, the building, it's already congestion there. Our church services with the building coming up, there will be no parking for anyone. We already experiencing folks coming from Kings and other places. They are leaving trash there in the church area. They are drinking and laying all on the steps and everything, and we can deal with some of these things, but we don't need another fast food takeout store. I remember several times they would talk about grime in the neighborhood. They said grime creates crime. Grime creates crime. The trash that we see, the trash that's there in the neighborhood, it's only gonna create problems. We have a Kings Market supermarket, it's only a block away. We have a 7-Eleven, which is only two or three blocks away. The store, as you see, it's only one building. I keep on hearing two buildings as the speaking is going on. There's only one building, and we are total in opposition of this permit and this store opening. We thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening. My name is Marion Haynes. I'm a resident in the city of Richmond in District Number Six. I've been there for about 10 years, and the addition of another fast food takeout establishment is in excess and not needed at all. It contributes to the demise, the demise of the health of our people in our neighborhoods. What we do need is a grocery store that sells and makes available appropriately priced fresh vegetable-type foods that the people in the neighborhood can have access to and use to improve their health and their children's health, cut down on doctor bills, et cetera. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Lucia Baskerville, and I'm a member of the Star Fellowship Baptist Church that's right across the street from this facility that we're talking about proposing to open, and I'm against the opening of this building. In our community, there are so many children that we have, we are bringing into our church through our summer programs, through our Sunday schools on Sunday morning, and most of these children are not brought to the building, but they are sent to the building by their parents or guardian. We are concerned for the lives of these young people. The proposal that we received that our church says that this place will be open from 8:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night, which means that in seven days a week, that means every day, all day long, these children would be exposed to that busy traffic of coming and going. And as stated, we already have a store a block away, that there is a crowd in front of the store all the time. Across the street from their store, there's another crowd that hangs on the corner, presumably handling drugs. That's what I've been told. But we are concerned for the youth in that community. We want to present to them some wholesome teaching, some wholesome training, some wholesome activities to help them to develop differently from what they've been accustomed to seeing in their community. And I think another carryout store would not help us at all at this time. And as previously stated, they need wholesome food, wholesome food that, such as vegetables, that they can help them in their development. I thank you, and I do oppose this amendment, this building, this store. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Page-Yill. I reside at 1401 Chambers Street since 1988. When I first moved there, that was, the store was active, and I think one or two years after, they had to close it up because of drugs. Now they wanna open it up again, for what? Same thing is gonna happen. We don't need it. Thank you.
Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the paper?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Tarek Razam. I'm actually the applicant. I have heard a lot about trash, heard a lot about a business bringing crime. There is no business that brings crime. Business, it's most likely a crime to happen when there's a vacant building, other than, you know, an operational business. I have amended for a takeout restaurant due to a mistake that occurred by the city by issuing a zoning compliance certificate, which actually got me to give up my ABC license to try to work with the neighborhood due to the fact they said they do not want any alcohol. The reason that I have applied for this to be a takeout restaurant due to the fact that I have lost in this particular building, I have invested, and I understand the concerns of the neighborhood, but how can you say that my business is gonna bring But how can you say that my business is gonna bring crime without it being running? I have another business, other businesses in the surrounding counties. I have no issues. There's no loitering. As for trash, trash, there is laws to govern against trash. This particular property does not have no legal use. By you granting this special use permit, you're, one, helping me establish my business, two, giving the property a legal use. As for the community asking for a quality supermarket, how can any investor or any business individual would come and do a supermarket of quality after what the city have done to me? They issued a zoning certificate of compliance, they rescinded it, then they would not do anything about it. I'm a taxpayer. I pay taxes, and so does my business. The city is losing taxes. And overall-
You have 30 seconds. Please begin to summarize.
In overall, ma'am, all I'm asking is for you to give a legal use to this entity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam President.
Ms. Trammell.
Sir, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Didn't you and I have a conversation back, what, two years ago? Was it New Year's Eve that I called you?
Yes, ma'am, you did, we did have, but I did have a zoning compliance certificate, and I have spent X amount. The city did say that my zoning certificate was rescinded on the 18th of January, which I came in the 22nd to the city of Richmond to renew my business license, which they did.
But in our conversation, when I called you, I asked you, had you taken it to the civic association and reached out to the community?
I told you, I'm sorry to cut you off, ma'am.
No, sir, go ahead, go ahead.
But I told you not, no, and that I was going to. And the civic association meeting was, you know, they actually, I, when I called them, they said it's not gonna get together until March. So therefore, how can I reach out to them when they do not meet until March?
But you were, no, that's my civic association. We didn't come back until April.
I understand it's your association, ma'am, but I have in my hand a zoning compliance certificate to tell me what to do.
But I asked you, I said, maybe you should, I said, you should not do any more work, especially late at night, 10, 11 o'clock at night, when the community is hearing it, seeing it, and I don't think you were on the property. And I told you, may, you need to get all your stuff together and get all your facts together, and you continuously kept working on the property. And I know that Oak Grove still met January, February, and March, because I go to their meetings every month, the second Tuesday.
Ma'am, I had the permit from the city of Richmond telling me that I could do actually some work. And as for the timing of what the, you know, my contractors, what the hours they worked, I wasn't aware of that. You know, I hire a contractor, they, I give them a permit, and they go on to do the work. As for the hours, I didn't know.
Thank you, sir.
You are.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the paper?
Madam President.
Mr. Adjelesta.
I, I had a comment.
Okay.
My name is Silver Person Harris, citizen of Richmond, Virginia. While the people have spoken, they've largely spoken in opposition to this store. I would like to speak in support of this, though, despite the community's outrage. I didn't hear them objecting to there being a business there. They were objecting to fish and chicken. The fact is, this is a commercial property, and it should have commercial zoning, and that's what this guy bought the property thinking it was. It's not right that the city granted him a certificate of occupancy. You know, something has to be done here. You know, master plans are good documents, but they don't, they don't take every individual building into consideration. And this is a commercial building in a residential neighborhood. It should be a commercial building because this building should not be torn down to put up a house. This building's already constructed. It's, it's there. And if the community doesn't support a restaurant there, they don't have to go to it. You know, that, there's no quicker way to put a business out of business by not supporting it. And there will not be beer or alcohol sold there, so that will deter a lot of the worser element of the people from coming out and loitering at the property. I would like to encourage the fellow to carry some fresh vegetables, you know, and see how they do, because if the community buys the stuff, he will continue to carry those products. And if they don't and only buy chips and whatever other garbage junk food he's selling, that's what he will sell, because that's what the community's buying. I'd also like to encourage the fellow to make something besides fish and chicken. I don't know his ethnicity. He looks like he may be from somewhere else, and most places have better food than what we serve here in America. So I would encourage you to serve food from your native land, because no, no doubt, it's better than any garbage weed here in America. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Mr. Adjelesta.
Thank you, Madam President. There's been some discussion about permits being issued by the city that may not have been working with the zoning of the, the real estate there. And I guess what I'd like to know is perhaps how we got to that situation. And I can understand, I'm looking at the parcel mapper, this individual property is zoned, R5 residential, single-family. But then when you look at the property class, which is not the zoning, obviously, the property class is a commercial, and then the land type is primary commercial. So I guess we, we have one of these where the type is not necessarily the same as the zoning. And then perhaps this permit was issued, could, since there are people from planning staff here, could, could they explain to us how we got to this point where perhaps work permits were being issued when the zoning might not have been conforming?
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Markham.
Good evening again. The property is zoned in an R5 residential district and was constructed before that zoning was put in place. So it is a commercial structure, and I would point out that there's also a single-family house on the property. There is a provision of the zoning ordinance that is known as the 40-year rule, and in single-family residential districts, commercial structures lose their non-conforming rights after 40 years. And so they, after 40 years of operating as a non-conforming commercial business in one of these single-family residential districts, they would no longer be able to be used for commercial. And that is the case with this property. And so the, the applicant applied for a certificate of zoning compliance, and the zoning officer that issued the, the certificate of zoning compliance was not aware of the 40-year rule and issued it in, as if the property was non-conforming. And as soon as that was brought to the zoning administrator's attention, the permit was
Okay. Can you just tell me quickly, what was the time lapse between when the permits were issued and when it was brought to the administrator's attention?
I'm not sure of the exact timeframe, but it was a month or two.
Okay. And in terms of how the staff look at these in order to issue the permit, has that been, has there been a training? Has there been a, a new way of categorizing things in the system? I know we've had some of these where the vacancy rule has then expired the non-conforming use.
Correct. We do have a list of these properties. There's about 25 of them approximately in the city. So we do have a list of those, and that's been distributed to the, to the folks at the zoning office.
Okay. And then with the existing zoning, is it the intention of the planning department that this property therefore be only residential?
Correct. It would have to comply with the underlying R5 zoning, which is a single-family district. So there is, and there is an existing single-family house on the property.
So there already is an existing single-family house on the property, which a secondary use would not be an accurate reflection? Or is R5 allow for duplexes?
It does not.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Robertson.
Thank you, Madam President. As been stated by the staff, you know, I, from the owner's perspective and the applicant's perspective, certainly there was an error made, appears to be an error made, that may have been recognized prior to the owner actually making an investment into the property with the understanding that he had the right to continue to, to use this building for the non-conforming use. That not being the case, and the zoning as it currently is, require, would require a special use permit, which is the reason why the owner is going through this process of attempting to get a special use at the present time. I think the community, we would prefer to do things by zoning. However, the, one of the great tools that we have in our tool chest is a special use permit opportunity, and it does allow for the community to be engaged in that conversation and to make sure that land uses that are non-conforming to the zoning meets with enhancing the quality of living experiences for the residents that live in the community and has been well-stated. Some communities in the city of Richmond have an overabundance of, whether we call them, rest, takeout restaurants, corner, small grocery stores, that really does not really meet the need of quality food in communities. And there are more than an ample supply of these type of businesses within this community area. I strongly support the community's position. The position is not against the applicant or against any hardship that the applicant may have experienced as a result of his process that he has experienced with the city. It is strictly based on the use of the land, the use, the type of the business that is being promoted to be brought into the community. And I do think that the better use on this area is, in order to satisfy the need, the community definitely needs a grocery store, there's no question about that. Richmond's situation as it relates to food deserts is despicable in the whole country. And there was a great article in the paper just a few days ago about how much of a food desert Richmond has. And so this is a problem that hopefully the, we'll, we really need to get our arms around. But I would encourage my colleagues, this property is located in the 8th District by address, but both Ms. Trammell and I both share the interests and co-share the civic associations and sometime quite a bit of overlap in memberships. And these people are long-term stewards of this, of these communities, and they work very hard, and they pick up a lot of trash, and they burn a lot of gas, running around, dealing with code enforcement issues and all kinds of issues in their community that will not be in as successful as we need to be in addressing for the community. And so I support them, and I would ask my colleagues to vote this paper, to vote against this paper. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Trammell.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to say, well, first of all, I want to thank all the citizens that came here on a short notice, because I know that they did not know that they had to come here to speak for or against the paper. So I want to thank them for taking their time to come here, because as you see, most of my elderly seniors, and some of them are very, very sick, but they're here tonight because they care about their community. They've been there 50 years. And also, they have said that we have a 301 Express, we have a 701 Express, we have a 7-Eleven, we have an S&amp;S store right down the street that sells your chicken, the crispy fried chicken. We've been, I've been in there. I go to that store. Also, there's a Church's Chicken right there. So, and I, I mean, you know I know the people there, okay? You know, you, we won't go there. But anyway, you and I have had several conversations. I asked you to please, I asked you to please take it to them when I was getting all the phone calls on New Year's Eve, when I reached out to you. And then many other times after that, and I rode through there, and I saw what they were doing, and I still try to get in touch with you to let you know what they were doing. And, because I knew that the people live over there, and it's their community, and, and you've heard them say that, hey, you said that, well, you said first that you didn't even know that they were working on, on the property. They were still over there. And that's what made some of the people mad, because they're thinking, okay, if this is going on and he doesn't even know, how's he gonna know what's going on at the store when he's not there? Because you're not gonna be there the whole time. And it's their community. It's their neighborhood, and they work with those police, they, they work with those police officers. They have-
Ms. Trammell.
All right, I'm fin-
Maybe you should just get those that are all opposed just to stand so we can see them one more time, and then-
Everybody that opposes, please stand. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk, if you would call the question.
Council's voting on item number 16, ordinance number 2014-194. Mr. Bilalz?
No.
Ms. Graziano?
No.
Mr. Samuels?
No.
Ms. Adjelesta?
No.
Ms. Robertson?
No.
Ms. Trammell?
No.
Ms. Newbill?
No.
Vice President Hilbert?
No.
President Mosby?
No.
That paper has not been adopted.
Madam Clerk? That's the last paper that's on the agenda?
That is correct. We have no motions to consider for amendment, or amending and voting, and there are no expedited papers as well. Okay, so are we, are we moving on? Would you like to move on to the approval of the minutes? Yes, please. Okay.
The minutes to be approved are from the special council meeting of Monday, February the 2nd at 5:00 p.m., the special council meeting of Friday, February 27th at 4:00 p.m., the informal meeting of Monday, February 23rd, 4:00 p.m., and the formal meeting of Monday, February 23rd, 6:00 p.m. I'll need a motion to approve those minutes. Councilmember Bilalz, would you make that motion?
I'll move.
Mr. Adjelesta, would you second that?
Second.
Council is voting on Councilmember Bilalz's motion to approve the minutes as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye, with one exception. I was not at one of the special meetings and need to abstain from that one. It was, I believe, the first one you read.
Mr. Adjelesta?
Aye, and I have the same situation on a special meeting that was held this past Friday, March 6th.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell? Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Trammell wasn't at the special meetings either. So I don't know if-
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye, except for the meeting on March 6th where I was absent.
And President Mosby?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, I need to abstain on last Friday's meeting. I didn't realize that was included in there as well.
It, March 6th meeting is not included.
Oh, it's not? Okay. Thank you.
Those minutes have been approved.
Thank you. We could move on to the reports and announcements?
Well, don't all jump at one time. Ms. Graziano?
Thank you, Madam President. I only have one announcement, and that is that the Trail Estates Community Association will hold their annual meeting Tuesday, March 19th at 7:00 o'clock at St. Michael's Middle School. And that would be my only announcement. Except I have one more announcement. I'm glad it's not snowing. I'm glad it's not snowing.
Yes, I concur.
Thank you.
Dr. Newbill?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a few announcements this evening. I'd like to announce that the Churchill North Neighborhood Transformation Public Meeting that was scheduled last week has been rescheduled, and that meeting will be held this Thursday, March 12th at 6:00 p.m. at the Woodville Elementary School, 2000 North 28th Street. Again, that's the Churchill North Neighborhood Transformation Public Meeting, rescheduled to until this Thursday, March 12th, Woodville Elementary School, 2000 North 28th Street. There will be a Crestview Area Cleanup Saturday, March 14th from 9:00 until noon, and everyone is asked to come out and be a part of that effort. Folks will meet at the corner of North 37th and Crestview Road. You will be provided with vests and bags, grabbers and gloves, and by the Clean City Commission, refreshments will be available, and please dress for the weather. Again, that will be this Saturday, March 14th, 9:00 a.m. to noon, asking everyone to come out and be a part of cleanup in our community, meeting at the corner of North 37th and Crestview Road. The last item is just to announce and to encourage everyone to come out to our next 7th District Community Meeting, which will be held on Monday, March 30th at 6:00 p.m. at the East District Center located at 701 North 25th Street. Our special guest that evening will be our new Police Chief Alfred Durham. So, again, 7th District Community Meeting, Monday, March 30th, 6:00 p.m., East District Center, 701 North 25th Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a whole lot of announcements. We don't have our, I know a lot of people have been calling me in reference to our meeting. Our meeting starts back on Thursday, April the 16th, Thursday, April the 16th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the satellite. This right here, if y'all can get it, it is the Style Weekly, and it's got some great information about our new Police Chief, Alfred Durham. And like I said, it's very, very interesting. He talks about community policing, he talks about our police officers going to get to know the people in the community, even though they're already doing that. And I just want to thank all of our police officers for a great job that they're doing, helping the citizens in the community. And also, the chief has a 100-day plan, and he's going to come out and meet the civic association presidents. I know that he did the walk with us over there with Major Steve Drew, Major Scott Booth, and so many other officers, and that was over there in the Oak Grove area. And as you saw, most of those citizens that did the walk, that were here tonight, were also involved in the walk with the Police Chief. This right here is your smoke alarm. Well, if you call 646-1526, that's 646-1526, the firefighters will come to your home, and they will install their smoke alarm for you for free. It will not cost you a penny. And just like the President of the United States of America says, Barack Obama says, every house, every home, every business, every church should have a work and smoke alarm because they're free. So, please call 646-1526 because his smoke alarm will save your life. And also, if you cannot get in touch with them, you can go by the nearest fire station and set up an appointment. They will come to your home, business apartment, whatever, and they will install it. And also, they will install a battery for them, too. They do not leave them with you. They install them for you. Okay, I know that earlier we spoke about my two papers that are being continued again, and that's over there in the Maguire Civic Association, and it's Wood, I mean, it's Chapel Drive, Maguire, and it's in reference to all this speeding. Last Thursday, we were supposed to be meeting, and, no, it was last Tuesday, and it was raining. And then Thursday, we had more snow come in. So, this is like the third or fourth time we've had to cancel the meeting because the citizens were too afraid to come out in that kind of weather. So, we're going to reschedule another date, but it's not the administration's fault because they are trying to, they were there, they were there that night, and only two citizens showed up. Also, if, I know that the new Police Chief is encouraging a lot of civic association to get restarted, also Neighborhood Watch and things like that. And I know that there are four in my, in our 8th District that's going to start, so if, if the Planning Commission would call me and ask me, or let us know, I mean, I think we have spoken about this, I know for six years, please let us know what is, you know, what is taking place, or if somebody has asked for an application, because I know somebody that was at the meeting Tuesday said that they had called down here to the Planning Commission, and they were told there was not a civic association in that area. There is two. There is the Woodstock Civic Association and also, well, Woodstock-Maguire, and then it's also the neighborhood, they have like Neighborhood Watch in that area on East Broadrock Road. So, if they would, and plus more of them are starting up. So, if you would just call me at 233-7382, that's my home, 233-7382, or call my personal cell, 240-5050, and I will let you know that we do have civic associations that are starting back up, and also the Neighborhood Watches that are starting back up in the 8th District. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell.
Thank you, Madam-
Mr. Samuels?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, a happy early St. Patrick's Day to everyone here. As you celebrate the Irish, please do so responsibly. That evening, you can be responsible at the Historic Jackson Ward Association, which is going to have their monthly meeting on Tuesday, March 17th. I want to congratulate all of the newly elected or promoted judges that we have here in Richmond, Virginia. It was a big year for us in the General Assembly in that regard. And lastly, I wanted to give a thank you to my former liaison, Mary Ann Pitts. She started a new job today with the Commission of Architectural Review and undoubtedly is thrilled to be back in her career again, but the time she dedicated to the people of the 2nd District and the city can't be overstated in her care and her diligence and her good-naturedness about having to work with me. So, I want to say publicly thank you to Mary Ann for all the years of service you provided to our city.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Mr. Bilalz?
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of announcements. Mary Munford will have their PTA school auction on Saturday, March 21st at 7:00 p.m., and that's held at the Jewish Community Center on Monument Avenue. And next town hall meeting for the 1st District will be Tuesday, March 24th at 6:00 p.m. at Albert Hill Middle School on Patterson Avenue. And I would just like to take a quick moment to say how happy and relieved I am that Dr. Bedden is staying in charge of Richmond Public Schools, and I think we have a real opportunity to have an impact as long as he is at the helm and the board is in support. So, welcome back, Dr. Bedden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bilalz. Ms. Robertson?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any new announcements to make. We had to cancel some of our meetings that were previously scheduled due to the weather and the preparation time. The meeting that was to be held this Saturday has been postponed. It will be rescheduled for the month of April, and I will have more detailed information on that at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Adgelesta?
Thank you very much. First, congratulations to George With basketball team who won the 3A East Regional Finals over the weekend. And I know earlier Councilwoman Graziano celebrated the Thompson Middle School basketball team with their season, and it's nice to see a feeder going into George With to continue the great work that Coach Cocker's been doing there. But I would like to also give a few additional announcements. There will be two civic meetings next week. The Randolph Civic Group will be meeting on March 16th, and then that will be at 6:00 o'clock. And then the Swansboro West Civic Association will be meeting at St. Francis Home at 6:30 on March 17th. Then, I just want to give a moment to say thank you to all the people who attended the Maymont Open House last week. I know we got snowed out once before, and there was a great attendance there, and that information is available online for anybody interested in what Maymont is planning to do. You can visit www.maymont.org/generosity, and you could learn more about the $35 million capital campaign and some of the projects that Maymont is working on. There's also an email that you can send your comments to the Maymont Director and Board. Two other meetings that will be happening, the 3rd District, or the 3rd Precinct Impact Meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, March 12th, at the Bird Park Roundhouse, and there will be representatives from code enforcement, as well as the zoning administrator, and somebody from traffic engineering who could explain, A, about the various efforts for code enforcement, also what's going on with zoning issues, and then finally, street signage and how, and what is appropriate street signage. I know we get a lot of requests for child at play signs, and we've got to all recognize that the city doesn't establish what the protocols are for street signs, that those are established by VDOT. And often, what you see on the streets are not necessarily approved signs, and that's something to be informed on next, this Thursday, March 12th, and that will be at the Round House in Bird Park. Then this weekend, we have our, at our convention center, the Pershing Rifles Annual Convention. They are here for the second year, and they have really enjoyed coming to Richmond. And for those that don't know about the Pershing Rifles, they were established after World War I, when General Pershing led the United States and Allied troops to a victory in Europe. And the Pershing Rifles are ROTC programs across this country, and they host their annual convention this weekend in Richmond, and there will be several hundred drill teams, and they're competing. And so, if you happen to be downtown near the convention center and you see individuals walking around with rifles, please know that they are part of an ROTC Drill Team National Conference that is here for the second year, and that will be quite an effort. And they're a really remarkable group, and they provide great discipline, and we have several of the ROTC programs in our colleges here will be participating in that. And then lastly, something fun. This weekend, SPCA is hosting a fundraiser. It's called the Dog Jog. So, if you are inclined to support the SPCA and the work that they do to provide shelter and medical services to our animals living in the city of Richmond, that's a fun event to be able to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Hilbert?
Thank you, Madam President. As mentioned earlier, John Westbrook passed away, and his funeral was today. Mr. Westbrook had a citywide influence, and then he was not only liaison for the 9th District, the 6th District, but also a constituent of mine in the 3rd District, and is a fine public servant and a strong advocate for his beliefs. He will be missed, and our condolences go out to his widow, Winnie, and his entire family. Tax relief for the elderly and disabled. If you can answer yes to the following questions, are you older than 65 or disabled? Do you own and live in your own home? Do you earn less than $50,000 annually? And do you have less than $200,000 in assets? That's excluding the value of your home or the equity in your home. If all those answers are yes, then you may qualify for real estate tax relief. If you, you can find the forms online at richmondgov.com, or you can contact 3rd District Liaison Lisa Townes to get the form at 804-646-6055. And you can't delay this, the deadline is coming. It's the end of the month, March 31st, and no applications will be accepted after that date. The next district meeting will take place on Wednesday, March 25th at 6:00 p.m. at Partnership for Families located at 800 West Graham Road. And as Mr. Samuel said earlier, would like to wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day. If you would like to be on our email list and get email updates from my office, please send your email address to lisa.townes, T-O-W-N-E-S, at richmondgov.com, or call her again at 804-646-6055. And remember, if you're contacting me via email, please be certain that you are using my City of Richmond email, which is chris.hilbert@richmondgov.com. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. To the 9th District residents, be advised that our March, April and May district newsletter is going out in the next two weeks. Look for yours via email and by delivery. If you prefer email, please contact me at michelle.mosby@richmondgov.com to get yours sooner. Upcoming civic events, civic meetings, the Milothean Team Civic Association chaired by Alma Moore will meet tomorrow, March 10th at 6:00 p.m. at the South Side Community Services Building at 4100 Hull Street. There is also a meeting with Forest View Civic Association that has been rescheduled since all of the snow, and that is chaired by Katie Limerick, and this meeting is also tomorrow at, March 10th at 7:00 p.m. at the Westover Baptist Church on Westover Heroes Boulevard. Our Career Tech and Educational Commission is tentatively scheduled to meet on Thursday, March 12th at 9211 Forest Hill Avenue in the RRPDC Boardroom, Suite 200. There is also our annual Easter egg hunt that is planned for April 6th, so please stay tuned for more information on that. And also, stay tuned for a We're Out of School Skate Party, which is planned to be held on the 11th on, at the Hull Street Skate. We're going to have DJ by Mr. Willis and emcee, young Prince Charles. So, I'm hoping that while we're out of school, we can all do some productive things and hang out together. Our next district meeting will take place on Thursday, March 19th at the Goodwill at 6301 Milothean Turnpike from 6:00 to 7:30. Our special guests will be those that were planning to come last month, but it was snowed out. Thaddeus Williamson, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Wealth Building, Mark Olinger, the Director of Richmond Department of Planning and Review, and he's going to talk about the plans for Milothean Turnpike, and also our School Board Representative, Ms. T. Chee, Pinkney Epps, and she's going to be talking about school-related items, and El Card is on the list. As always, I'm concerned about you in the 9th District. Please continue to contact me with ideas, thoughts or concerns. My email address again is michelle.mosby@richmondgov.com, and I can be reached at 804-363-5093, or michellemosby.org, or through my liaison, yzaya.harris@richmondgov.com. And also, for our council members, please be reminded that everyone is to be here Monday, March 16th at noon to begin our review of the budget. That's all the announcements that we have at this time. Madam Clerk, will you please read the introductory papers for this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance 2015-48, to declare that a public necessity exists and to authorize the CAO to acquire a tax delinquent judicial sale of property located at 1800 Crowe Street, and to accept title to such property for the purpose of maintaining such property as public green space and for recreational uses. Planning Commission, March 16, 1:30 council public hearing, March 23rd. Ordinance 2015-49, to amend City Code Sections 50-401, 404, 406 and 408 concerning the City Stormwater Management Program, and to amend Appendix A of the City Code by adding new fees for City Code Section 50, 415A, for the purpose of ensuring compliance with state law. Land Use Housing and Transportation, March 17, 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, March 23rd. Ordinance 2015-50, to amend City Code Section 2, 454 concerning traffic control for the purpose of requiring a traffic calming study and reporting the results to an appropriate council standing committee prior to the installation of any bicycle lane. Public Safety, March 24th, 5:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, April 13th. Ordinance 2015-51, to amend Ordinance 2014-188173, which closed public use and travel a portion of right-of-way known as Lewis Street, located between its intersection with Williamsburg Road and its intersection with a CSX Transportation, Inc. right-of-way, and a portion of right-of-way known as 37th Street, located between its intersection with Lewis Street and its intersection with Nicholson Street, for the purpose of modifying certain terms and conditions upon which the portion of right-of-way was closed. Planning Commission, April 16th, 1:30 p.m. Council Public Hearing, April 13th. Resolution 2015-R16, to approve an expenditure in the amount of $500 from the Council District Funds for the 4th District to make a donation to Girls for Change for its 2015 Date with Dad event. Council Public Hearing, March 23rd. Resolution 2015-R17, to approve an expenditure in the amount of $1,780 from Council District Funds for 2nd District to pay DIT for the printing and mailing of the 2nd District winter and spring 2015. Winter and Spring 2015 Newsletter to 2nd District residents. Council Public Hearing, March 23. Resolution 2015-R18, to amend Resolution 2007-R162, 2008-29, which adopted city council expenditure and reimbursement guidelines governing the use of council district funds and council operations funds for the purpose of making revisions to the guidelines. Council Public Hearing, March 23. Resolution 2015-R19, to amend the rules of procedure adopted by Resolution 2014-R253-240 for the purpose of modifying the time at which the informal meeting begins. Council Public Hearing, March 23. Resolution 2015-R20, to request the Economic Development Authority negotiate and enter into an agreement with a school board that encourages the greater use of the Bonanza Corps Washington Redskins Training Center by athletic teams of public high schools in the city for sporting events. Education and Human Services, March 12, 5 p.m. Council Public Hearing, March 23. Resolution 2015-R21, to request the CAO to conduct a study concerning the use of Internet lodging services in the city to accommodate visitors participating in or attending the upcoming UCI 2015 Road World Championships, and whether any amendments to the city laws and regulations are necessary to address any issues created by the rental of real property through Internet lodging services. Governmental Operations, March 26, 5 p.m. Council Public Hearing, April 13. This concludes the new legislation.
Thank you. There be no further business before the council. This meeting is adjourned.
Well, we started right on time tonight, 6:00, straight up. Got through the caller order, awards and presentations, citizens' comment period, consent agenda, then we had just one item left on the regular agenda, and that was the special use at-